Okay, we'll call a meeting to order. Julie, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Pujol, absent. Commissioner Lodge.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Higgins.
Here.
Vice Chair Campanella.
Here.
Chair Thompson.
Here.
Okay, for preliminary matters, we have two sets of draft minutes and a resolution. Unless anybody has any changes or amendments, can we have a motion to approve those items?
I have a change I'd like to suggest on the February 12th minutes.
Okay.
Julie, on page five, under General Comments. Do you want me to just go ahead and you can listen to this? So, a third bullet from the bottom where it talks about Commissioner Jordan. If we could just, I can't even make sense of what I said there.[72.22][72.22](Laughter) Or what you wrote, but I said. So, after the second sentence, if you could just say "towards," and then replace that whole next sentence with mandatory reuse for landscaping. Does that make sense?
All right. So, they're trying to add a new sentence.
Yeah, so that was more, if I didn't exactly say that, that was what my intent was to say. And it looks a lot better with fewer words. Thank you.
Any other amendments? Can we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Can we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the minutes and resolutions are approved. Renee, do we have any requests for continuances or postponements?
No, Mr. Chair, we do not.
All right, any announcements?
I do have two announcements. One is that we do have scheduled a special meeting of the Planning Commission on March 18th. That's a Wednesday. There will be a special meeting of the Planning Commission and also a public workshop to discuss one of our first public workshops for the new zoning ordinance effort. The focus of that discussion will be on the issues and options paper that was released by our consultant and is available on our website for public review. That meeting will be from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the David Gephardt Public Meeting Room. Again, that's March 18th. And then, following that meeting, we will have a more informal open house in the lobby of the Community Development Department Building for any follow-on questions and consultations with staff. And then, my second announcement is that this will be my last official meeting as senior planner, or what I call planner in the chair, at the Planning Commission meetings. While we undergo recruitment to fill the, what will be a vacant senior planner position, I am pleased to announce that Allison DeBusk has accepted filling in as acting senior planner in the interim period, so she will be here with you next week.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to acknowledge with this being Ms. Brooks' last day, personally, I wanted to acknowledge all the work that you've done. This has been really a quick ramp-up following the recession. We've had a lot going on, and I know you've been virtually overloaded. And so, you know, your expertise, your support, your patience, all of that's much appreciated through agreement and a professional disagreement, I would say, which just happens when people work together. So, thank you, and I know we'll be still seeing you often. Thank you, Renee.
Commissioner Campanella.
Thank you. In case the other NGO committee members were not aware of it, what's posted online and which will be the subject of this public meeting is the report that we received at our last session. So, any of our comments are not reflected in that report. But my understanding is that minutes of that meeting will be posted online prior to the session, I believe. So, I just wanted to let the other commissioners know if they weren't aware of that. Thank you.
Okay. I'll open the floor for any comments from the public on items not on our agenda today. Are there any speaker slips? Apparently not. We'll close the public testimony and come up with the first item, a status report on the Highway 101 HOV lane project. Is that going to be you, Rob?
Me and a bunch of people.
Okay. Take it away.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, planning commissioners. We have a host of people, that's a good intro to introducing them, who are here today to help. You're very familiar with Daniel Gullett in the Planning Division. And then, toward the back, Pat Kelly and Derek Bailey, who are from Engineering and Traffic Engineering. And then, also Fred Luna of Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. And Steve Vandenberg are going to be helping out, also Association of Governments are going to be helping out with the 101. And then, also, a new face to you, Tony Harris with Point C Consultants, who was hired by SB CAG recently. They're all going to be helping out with this presentation. I think the last time, actually, Daniel and I were kind of debating when it was, we were in these chambers talking about this issue, we guessed late 2012. It's been some time. And since that time, many things have happened. The SB CAG Board finalized moving forward with the 101 HOV project. And along with it, several other projects at the same time, which includes the replacement of the Union Pacific Bridge, improvements to the, or improvements to the Olive Mill interchange in the form of a roundabout. And then, also, what we will not be talking about today is improvements to the San Ysidro interchange. And obviously, that's not in our jurisdiction, but that's just part of what they move forward. And so, we are here today to give you a status on the project itself, the 101 HOV project itself, and those two items. And with that, I would like to welcome Steve Vandenberg, who's going to introduce, again, their team and the segments they're going to do to explain to you where are we with this 101 high occupancy vehicle lane project.
Okay, thank you. You can either come up there or take a seat, whichever is better.
Sure. Okay. Okay, as Rob said, I'm Steve Vandenberg, Deputy Director of the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments. And we're very glad to be here, giving you a status report on the HOV project. As Rob mentioned, it's been quite a while since I think you received an update on the project. And Rob said, about three years, I think that's consistent, when I went through our records last night, it's been quite a while. And I don't know everyone's level of familiarity with the project. So, we have a lot of information for you. I'm just assuming that a lot of this will be new to you. So, if you would indulge me, we'll go through a presentation that probably would last about 30 minutes. And there will be others that will stand up and help me with the presentation. Again, I'm the Deputy Director at SB CAG. My responsibilities are handling Measure A-funded projects. We're also going to have Tony Harris of Point C Consulting participating in the presentation today. And we're going to have a representative from Caltrans. He was going to be here. He's had a family emergency. He's not going to be able to be here. That was Scott Eads from Caltrans. So, I'm going to try and cover for him, as well as Fred Luna for SB CAG staff. Okay, Caltrans was going to participate, and it's appropriate for them to participate in the HOV status report because, of course, they are the owner-operator of US 101. They also, as a condition of approval for the Milpiss to Hot Springs project, which is now Phase 1 of the HOV project, they're required to give you at least annual status reports on the Milpiss to Hot Springs project. And again, it's been quite a while since we've participated in a status report to you. But we're very happy to be here, and we are available to come back on a regular basis. We know that you play an important role in the HOV project. You have coastal permitting authority, and we are happy to come back as often as you would like to give you updates on the HOV project. I work, again, for SB CAG, the Regional Transportation Planning Agency. We are responsible for setting priorities on regional transportation projects. And also, we develop funding plans for the various highway transportation projects in Santa Barbara County. We have 13 members of our Board of Directors. All five supervisors are on the Board of Directors. And a mayor or city council member from each of the eight cities in the county are on our Board of Directors. Our current chair is Jim Richardson from the Mayor of Solving. We have a staff of 20. And we have a very small team working on a very large highway, high occupancy vehicle lane project. We have an engineer, that's Mr. Luna, a planner, a public information officer, and myself. So, we're working on that very large project with a relatively small amount of staff. We did hire Tony Harris, who will be participating in the presentation in 2014. Our board hired him to provide him with independent advice on how to deliver this very large project in this 101 corridor on the South Coast. Here's the outline of the presentation I'm going to give. We're going to go through some background on the HOV project, our progress in delivering the four phases of the project. It has been divided into four phases. And in particular, in Phase 4, that is the one that will be coming to you for some coastal permitting. And so, we're going to spend a little more time on the status of the environmental document and the status of design. And at that point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Harris when we get to that, to talk about design. We're going to talk to you also about some corridor-related or parallel projects, including, as Rob mentioned, Cabrillo, Union Pacific Railroad, Olive Mill. There's also some related projects at San Ysidro and a couple in the Carpinteria area, Rincon and Santa Claus Lane. And then, I'll have a conclusion slide. Okay, the US 101 high occupancy vehicle lane project. The focus area for the project is a 16-mile, four-lane corridor from Muscle Shoals to Santa Barbara. There are six lanes to the north, six lanes to the south. We are currently experiencing congestion within the corridor. I'm sure everybody's personally familiar with it. It's at least two to four hours a day, and it's expected to increase to 10 hours a day by 2040. And of course, there are limited alternate routes to US 101 on the South Coast. The high cost of housing on the South Coast exacerbates congestion. Of course, people are living in Ventura where there's more affordable housing. They're commuting to the South Coast, to Santa Barbara, Galita, and Carpinteria for jobs. And what, the phenomenon that we experience is a peak directional commute. We have about 15,000 people a day coming north from Ventura in the morning, and then trying to return home in the evening. And in the morning, they're all trying to use the two lanes going north. In the evenings, two lanes going south, and it just overtaxes the capacity of the highway. This congestion that we're experiencing is impacting businesses. We hear a lot from businesses with expressing concerns about their ability to retain employees that have to live in Ventura and work in Santa Barbara or Galita, and have to make the commute up and down the corridor. They've expressed their concerns to us about the congestion problem in the four-lane facility. And the commuters themselves are being taxed by this commute. And again, it just affects our ability to attract and retain good employees to the businesses on the South Coast. Over the last 20 years, I'm sorry, over the last 20, last slide. Over the last 20 years, there has been a consensus building on the South Coast to address this US 101 congestion issue. Between 1989 and 93, Caltrans actually made the first attempt to widen US 101. And it was, that project was referred to as the Santa Barbara Six-Lane Project. It was funded with state and federal sources. And work stopped in 1993 on the environmental document. There was a large public outcry over an attempt to widen 101 back in the late 80s and early 90s. The plan that Caltrans put forward was not very aesthetically pleasing, would have removed a lot of landscaping in the corridor. Also, I think that, at that point in time, the congestion that people were experiencing was really weekend congestion. It was people coming up to Santa Barbara from LA and trying to get back on Sunday. They were experiencing the congestion. So, people in the community didn't really have a connection with that congestion. The congestion was somebody else's problems on the weekend. And so, the impacts that would have occurred to the community from trying to widen the highway to six lanes weren't really balanced out by what were the perceived benefits from people that lived on the South Coast. Between 93 and roughly 2002, congestion continued to grow, and it spread to the weekdays. And it got severe enough that in 2002, SB CAG initiated a 101-in-motion study. This was a study funded by Congresswoman Lois Capps through a grant she acquired from the federal government. A technical committee was formed by SB CAG to talk about congestion relief options for the 101 corridor. And that technical committee consisted of transit advocates, bicycle advocates, automobile advocates. It was a broad cross-section of people in the community assisting SB CAG on how to solve the congestion problem on US 101. And it became very clear that, based on the values of people on the South Coast, that there would need to be a multimodal solution. Simply widening a highway was not going to be enough. And it was also clear that a mode shift was going to be required for long-term congestion relief. People were going to have to start using transit, buses, and car pools and van pools in order to completely address all the congestion issues that the corridor was facing and would face. The outcome of the 101-in-motion process, the recommendation, the shorthand for it, is a lane and a train. Adding a commuter train between the Ventura, Santa Barbara, and Galita area, as well as a new lane, that would be a high occupancy vehicle lane that would be used by buses, car pools, and van pools. The 101-in-motion study and the recommendations that came out of it were the framework for our transportation sales tax here in Santa Barbara County. Measure A was put on the ballot in 2008, and it incorporated many of the projects, the capital projects that were recommended by 101-in-motion, as well as the transit and alternative modes that would be needed to reduce congestion here on the South Coast. And when it was voted on by people in Santa Barbara County, it got 79% support. It's a half-cent transportation sales tax that got 79% support, one of the highest vote totals for a tax like this in California history. The flagship project in Measure A is widening the US 101 project. And the measure passed in all communities throughout Santa Barbara County, from Coymama Valley, Orca, Santa Maria, Guadalupe, every community voted for Measure A. In 2010, after the measure was passed and we started the implementation phase, all the cities and the Board of Supervisors adopted resolutions designating the US 101 widening as the highest priority regional transportation project. It has broad and deep support here in Santa Barbara County. It is the flagship project of our Measure A program. The 101-in-motion plan, the approach to reducing congestion, I said it was a multimodal, multimodal recommendations came out of that plan. High occupancy vehicle lane and rail were determined to be the modes that would have the biggest impact on reducing congestion in the corridor. Thus, the shorthand, a lane and a train. There are other aspects to 101-in-motion, but the lane and the train are the two biggest congestion reducers, or will be the two biggest congestion reducers. The lane, again, is going to be high occupancy vehicle lane. It will be a part-time high occupancy vehicle lane. That means it will be, serve as a car, it will serve car pools and van pools during the morning and evening commutes, but for the rest of the day, anybody can drive in the HOV lane. So, it's open to all vehicles during off-peak periods. And it's continuous access. You can enter and exit the high occupancy vehicle lane at any point in the 16-mile corridor. And the pictures indicate what this high occupancy vehicle lane will look like. And you can see, again, there's continuous access, unlike some other high occupancy vehicle lanes in Southern California, where there are, it's, you're separated from the general traffic as you're driving in the high occupancy vehicle lane. And there are breaks in a barrier where you can enter or exit the high occupancy vehicle lane. That's not what we're trying to achieve here. We're working on a continuous access high occupancy vehicle lane in a part-time lane. So, this is the area for implementing the high occupancy vehicle lane, the 16-mile corridor. And I mentioned that we're going to be trying to deliver this project in four phases. And the fourth phase is the one that would be coming before this commission for a coastal permit. And I'm going to go through each one of these phases, but just to orient you, of course, Phase 1 is in the city of Santa Barbara. We call it the Milpiss to Hot Springs project. It is completed. I'll talk a little bit more about that. Phase 2, we go all the way down to the southern end of the corridor, starts in Ventura County, in Muscle Shoals. There's about four miles of Phase 2 in Ventura County and two miles in Santa Barbara County. Comes right up to Carpinteria Creek in the city of Carpinteria. The third phase is inside the city of Carpinteria, and it's limited to reconstructing bridges that will make way for the widening to six lanes, which would then occur in Phase 4. So, the third phase is limited to bridge widensings, and then the fourth phase will actually put the pavement down through the city of Carpinteria, all the way up to the city of Santa Barbara. Phase 1, just to give you an idea of what was incorporated into Phase 1, this is just a map kind of referencing you. The Phase 1 project started at the Hot Springs interchange and went up to, roughly to Milpiss Street. This project is originated after the effort by Caltrans to widen the highway in 1993 failed, and work stopped on the draft environmental document. And again, that community task force was created after the 1993 work stoppage by SB CAG. And the antenna that, in that task force, was trying to identify smaller operational improvements, spot improvements that could be done in the corridor in lieu of widening. And the Milpiss to Hot Springs was originally conceived of as an operational improvement. It was the largest operational improvement originally identified. And again, when support for the widening began to grow, it was transformed into the first phase of a high occupancy vehicle lane project. And the scope of the project was adjusted to be able to accommodate the high occupancy vehicle lanes. Phase 1 is done. It was completed in 2012, and I've put some bullet points up there showing you the various features of the project. Added a third northbound and southbound lanes. Replaced and widened the US 101 Milpiss Street Bridge, the 101 bridge over Milpiss Street. Casique Street was connected under US 101. A roundabout was added. That roundabout, that's at Cabrillo, Coast Village, Hot Springs, Old Coast Highway, that was part of the Phase 1 widening of what is now the HOV project. There was improvements to bike and ped access along, in the vicinity of the project and along Old Coast Highway. And it was a partnership of SB CAG, Caltrans, and the city of Santa Barbara. It cost $57 million, and we funded it with the predecessor to Measure A, which was called Measure D. That was the half-cent sales tax prior to Measure A, and we used state and federal gas taxes. This is, again, one of the outcomes of the project, the roundabout at Hot Springs, Cabrillo, Old Coast Highway. I wish we had a before picture because there was long queues of traffic at stop signs. Now, we have this great roundabout project as part of the Phase 1 outcomes. This is just a sidewalk along Old Coast Highway in front of the tennis courts, the city tennis courts there. There was just a dirt path along here, so we managed to accomplish that, along with making the improvements to the highway to accommodate an HOV lane. And this is Casique, Casique Street underpass, so. So, that's Phase 1. Phase 1 is done. Phase 2 is all the way at the other end of the corridor, again, from roughly the Muscle Shoals area up to Carpinteria Creek in the city of Carpinteria. This is six miles of HOV lanes. I mentioned it's four in Ventura County, two in Santa Barbara County. As part of widening the highway to add these HOV lanes, a Class 1 bike path was also constructed on the southbound side. And you may be able to see that as you head south, it's, and you get into Ventura County. A really beautiful outcome of this project is the Class 1 bike path on the southbound side. There's also a ped undercrossing was constructed in the La Cincida area in Ventura County. People in La Cincida, to go from the inland side to the ocean, used to scooch through a drainage culvert and come out on the beach side. Now, they have a tunnel that they can go through. Construction began in 2012, and Phase 2 is going to be completed here in March. We will have a ribbon-cutting ceremony on March 23rd. This was $102 million, and it was funded from state Proposition 1B funds. So, we were able to leverage state dollars to deliver this in partnership with Ventura County. They don't have a transportation sales tax, and they weren't really sure how the four miles in their county were going to be funded. When Prop 1B was passed by voters, it was a bit of a godsend. The money fell out of the sky to pay for the four miles that would be in Ventura County. They really had no other way to pay their share of it. Again, this is a partnership of SB CAG, Ventura County, and then Los Angeles office, which is Caltrans District 7, and the San Luis Obispo office of Caltrans, which is District 5. That's that Class 1 bike path on the southbound side. It's just a great outcome of this project. And that's the ped tunnel that takes people over to the La Cincida area. They now don't have to go through a drainage culvert anymore. Phase 3, as I mentioned, is in the city of Carpinteria. We refer to it as the Linden and Casitas Interchanges project. This project would reconstruct the Linden Avenue Bridge over US 101, the Casitas Pass Bridge over US 101, and on 101 itself, the 101 bridge that goes over Carpinteria, over Carpinteria Creek. And that's the one that's farthest to the right. This project is also fully funded. This is a $100 million project. Our, the partners are Caltrans, the city of Carpinteria, SB CAG. Again, the project will reconstruct the bridges on, at Linden Avenue, Casitas Pass Road, to allow the six-lane widening to go underneath them. It will also reconstruct the US 101 bridge over Carpinteria Creek to carry six lanes. We're also going to make some local improvements as part of this. One in particular that will benefit the 101 is extending the Via Real frontage road in Carpinteria and eliminating gaps. There are a couple of gaps in the frontage road, and people end up using Highway 101 to shuttle around in Carpinteria. And by constructing the frontage roads, we can keep local traffic on local roads and help decongest the highway. And we're also making some Class 1 bike improvements underneath the Carpinteria Creek US 101 bridge. The environmental document for the Caltrans was approved in 2010. We're 95% of the way through design, so we're getting very close on this one. We anticipate to get coastal development permits from Carpinteria in 2015. We have one issue that you may have seen in the newspaper. It got splashed across the front of the newspapers. We have an issue with FEMA that we're trying to resolve over floodplain maps. We have to redraw some maps in the Carpinteria area. The project is actually going to be very beneficial for people in Carpinteria. We're going to take hundreds of people out of the floodplain and keep floodwaters in Carpinteria Creek out to the ocean. We just need to redraw the flood maps for that, and that's something that we're working on right now. Construction is scheduled for the spring of 2016. It will last four years. This is just a slide showing you the Casitas Pass Road Bridge, what's, and this is the after. This is visual simulation of the after project. And what's, what we're highlighting here is this unique feature in the median. And this is the way that the project team, Caltrans, SB CAG, and the community worked together to find a solution. As part of reconstructing this bridge, to provide six lanes underneath the bridge to carry 101 underneath it, it was decided to add some lanes to the bridge deck to improve traffic circulation on Casitas Pass Road. The community was very concerned about wall-to-wall concrete. The traffic engineers thought there need to be more lanes than what are being reflected right here, which are four lanes. So, the compromise was to construct a landscaped median on the bridge and actually put trees on the bridge. And those trees and that landscaping can be removed in the future if there's a need for additional turning lanes on the bridge, which is what the engineers project are going to be needed, but which the community says aren't needed right now, and they just don't want the extra concrete. So, this is a compromise in a way that the team worked out a solution with the community. And it's going to be a very unique feature as you're coming up from LA. This is one of the first bridges that you're going to see going over the highway, and there are going to be trees on the bridges, and it's going to become a bit of a landmark in Southern Santa Barbara County. And this is Linden Avenue. This is what it looks like right now, and if you hit the button, this is what it will look like. We're going to connect Via Real to the Linden Avenue area. That's one of the gaps that's going to be eliminated to improve local circulation. And bus service in Carpinteria will now have a circuitous route it can take, where right now, it really has to take a lot of out-of-direction travel to have a bus route, a circulating bus route in the city of Carpinteria. route, a circulating bus route in the city of Carpinteria. But that's one of the, another one of the things we were able to accomplish while we were accomplishing the highway widening in Carpinteria or the bridge reconstructions. Phase Four. This is the project that gets a lot of discussion. This is the Measure A-funded phase of the project. It's referred to as the South Coast HOV project. The partners working on Phase Four, the city of Santa Barbara, the county of Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, SB CAG, Caltrans. Caltrans has been the lead agency for environmental. The primary project sponsor is SB CAG. Again, this is Measure A-funded. This segment of Phase Four is 10.9 miles. The environmental document was approved by Caltrans in August of 2014. We do need coastal permits for this project from Santa Barbara, Carpinteria, the county. And I believe in the county, we're going to need possibly two from the Monosito Planning Commission, as well as the countywide planning commission. So, this is going to be very complex and challenging to take the project from environmental through design. This phase of the project is $425 million. Measure A will provide $140 million. We have other discretionary funds available through state gas taxes that will provide $135 million. And then, we have to compete for $150 million. We've got to go out and find that other $150 million. So, we have two-thirds of the funding identified. This project is going to have to go out, and we're going to have to compete for the other $150 million to have a fully funded project. There have been two challenges to the EIR. You've probably read about those in the paper as well. We're working our way through those challenges right now with Caltrans. We're hoping that they won't delay the schedule for Phase Four. Scheduled delays resulting cost increases, cost increases affect our ability to share transportation funding with our member agencies, including the city of Santa Barbara. The more expensive the project gets, the less money we have to share with our member agencies. The board direction that we got as staff, despite these EIR challenges, is to initiate design. Let's go. The board said, saddle up, let's go. Let's start design of this project. Construction is tentatively scheduled for 2017 to 2027. It's tentatively scheduled to be constructed in subsegments. We aren't anticipating we'll construct all 10.9 miles as one giant project, especially because we need separate coastal permits. So, it's probably going to be broken into smaller pieces. But we're not at a point yet of defining what those smaller pieces are at this time. We did retain Tony Harris as a US 101 corridor advisor. He works for Point C Consulting. He's worked for the Federal Highway Administration. He's worked for Caltrans. He's worked for private sector clients. He has a broad experience in delivery of large, complex projects. And this is probably the biggest, largest project ever delivered in Santa Barbara County. His scope of work is to identify project delivery strategies that will avoid and minimize delays, expedite delivery, minimize costs, maximize cost savings. He has to help us come up with a phase and schedule of how to construct the project and minimize community impacts during construction. We heard a lot during the environmental phase about the community's concerns, about the potential impacts of construction. He has to help us develop funding strategies, assist with procuring design consulting services since we are entering the design phase now. And there's going to need to be a charter between SB CAG and Caltrans defining who's going to do what in this quarter. And Tony's going to facilitate that charter. There are also a number of parallel projects that we've been tasked with working on at the same time as we're working on the HOV project. And he has to coordinate the delivery of those projects with the HOV project, come up with a strategy for coordinating their delivery, and coming up and assist with strategies for funding those corridor-related parallel projects. And we'll go through those a little bit later in the presentation. Tony made a recommendation to the SB CAG board for how to design this project. This is a huge project. And he made that recommendation to the board in December 2014. In March, in April, he's going to come back with a more detailed set of recommendations for how to actually implement the design approach that he's recommending. And at this point, if you go to the next slide, I think I will turn it over to Tony to explain to you, how are we going to design this thing? And looking forward to construction, what are his thoughts on how to construct a project of this size?
Good afternoon. And thanks for the opportunity to kind of share with you what I've been up to in particular. As you heard from Steve, I had the opportunity to basically start working in the quarter, actually, last August, I got started. And one of the very first things that I wanted to do was to kind of do an assessment, which is basically go through all of the information that was readily available, talk to a lot of the stakeholders, and begin to understand exactly what are the challenges as we try to move forward. So, I actually went through initiated effort by meeting with Caltrans at both the district level and headquarters level, meeting with SB CAG staff, meeting with a lot of local agencies, and a lot of different stakeholders throughout the quarter. Let me go to the next slide. And basically, what I concluded after this is, in my experience in working on a lot of projects when I was still in the public sector, but also in the private sector, there are several things you need to actually move forward a project and to make it happen in a manner. One of the key things that you need is actually project readiness. One of the reason that this region was able to get funding for the HOV lane in the Ventura County and the two miles in Santa Barbara County was when Prop 1B passed, you could only get that money if that project could be in construction by a deadline. If you couldn't hit the deadline, no matter what you said, you couldn't get it. It was in the proposition that was voted by the voters, and that was the only choice you had. So, one of the key things that are important when you've got large projects like this is advancing them forward. The other key thing is when you're advancing them forward is generating better and more detailed information to provide more clarity on the scope, what would it look like, how would it fit within the community. You get to a certain level of that as you do the project initiation, as you do it environmental. But as you get into more of the detailed design, you get more clarity. So, you can begin to really understand exactly what would this large project really look like in particular. And the other part of it is trying to find ways as you go forward with the project and understand the elements of it is, how best to actually lay this out for construction to get it done, but at the same time minimize the impact on the community during construction and get the best benefit of it. So, I crafted a set of recommendations that I presented as an informational item to the board back in December. And what I really suggested was, let's move forward with the design. Let's not worry so much at this point in time about how to break it up into construction packages, because what I saw, I just didn't feel there was enough information to make a clear recommendation on that. It was clear also to me that I felt there was a need for a change in the face on the northern end, is where I would put it. And as such, one of the recommendations I made is that SB CAG should hire a consultant to take the lead on the design on the northern portion of it through the city of Santa Barbara and also the county in particular. And sometimes you're bringing in an opportunity to take a look at fresh ideas within the footprint of the environmental document that you already have and the objective trying to achieve. And that sometimes creates an opportunity to bring different thoughts to the table. And on the southern end in particular, I felt very comfortable in saying that it's fairly straightforward. A lot of details have been worked out. Let's move forward with Caltrans in particular. There are elements within the quarter that leans itself to be done on a quarter-wide basis. For example, one of those things is surveying and mapping. No really reason to split that up. Every project I've worked on my career as an engineer and doing design work, I found myself sitting around waiting for survey and mapping to get done before I can get started. So, one of the things from a quarter perspective is, let's just map it. Just get it done because we know we're going to need it and sort out some information. So, the recommendation included some of those things in particular. Go back one second before you leave that. One other point I do want to point out is, my scope of work talked about providing information on innovative delivery strategies. We've heard discussion about design build. We heard discussion about other methods. Typically, the trigger point for making a decision on those type of innovative strategies is when you're approaching what's kind of known as the 35% design phase of the project. Once you go past that, you normally lock yourself into the traditional method of you design it, you bid it, then you go to construction. And a lot of ideas, as we move forward towards this stage, it takes us to a decision point. At that decision point, we have better detailed information about design. Hopefully, with overlay, with opportunity for additional outreach and communication, more clarity on what the project will look like. And we have an opportunity to look at the tea leaves and see where the funding opportunities are at the federal and state level at that point, and have all that feed into that alternative delivery method and also potentially construction package. As for related projects, which is also my scope of work, it provides an opportunity, while this work is going on, is to work with the city and the county on these other related projects to get clarity about the scope of those, the timing of those projects, the next phases of them, but also what are potential funding opportunities that we can pursue in partnership for those projects. So, it was really a strategy to, let's move forward, let's generate better information, and then, let's use that information to basically move forward all the projects within this I jumped ahead a little bit in talking about this, but I really felt strongly, as I looked at it, is that we needed to actually separate the work, have Caltrans focus on a portion of it, and have SB CAG actually hire a consultant to actually work on it. You get a little more control. That doesn't mean that you're not going to have to comply with Caltrans requirements, because you will. I've worked there, and in my past career, they will do oversight. They still have the requirements, but it creates a partnership. One of the larger projects I worked on recently was a project in LA County. For those of you familiar with the Magic Mountain area, where recently they opened up a truck lane. That project came about by a partnership. Part of the work was actually done by the private sector, working in partnership with Caltrans and Los Angeles Metropolitan Transportation Agency. We worked together as three members of a team to actually move forward, not the environmental document, and also the design. And as we was moving forward, we saw an opportunity to actually split off the truck lane components of it and get funded and move forward with it. By the time we actually moved forward and got farther, we was able to identify additional dollars with that. And I had the pleasure of going to a, not only the ribbon-cutting ceremony, but the opening ceremony for the truck lanes piece, and actually, they're moving forward with the more detailed design for the rest of the extension of the carpool lanes. So, that's an example. And that project itself was over a half a billion-dollar project as we moved forward. So, it's just one of the examples I've had opportunity to work on. As Steve said, we're currently working right now to put together the information to move forward with the recommendations and to actually come back to the board and present that information. The goal is to actually be back in front of the board with an update at their meeting this month and actually bring forth items for their consideration and actions in April in particular. I have approved by the board. We go through the process. We identify the teams, and everybody could begin to move forward later this summer. And actually, the 35% work will be taking place later this year and throughout 2016. As for the quarter-related projects, you've seen the list. They were very specifically identified in my scope of work. Not only were they identified, but it said also any other permitted related condition projects, which I'm still learning and trying to figure them out along the way. And the other benefit by advancing with the 35% is, we get an opportunity to generate better information and to be in front of bodies such as yourself, to educate you as we're generating it, so we can begin to understand what are going to be the permit conditions earlier on, so we can factor that into our overall construction strategies in moving forward. The key with that is, it's a quarter. People don't just travel on the state highway, they travel on the transportation system. And as such, we need to understand how they interreact and how they relate and how the potential construction-related activities and design-related activities are. And with that, you can lay out the best methods for advancing all the improvements. As I've told people that ask me, what's my role and my responsibility, I strongly see my role and responsibility is all of those. And to actually be an advisor and work with all the partners and the coordinators to advance it. A key example that I think is working well is that the memorandum of understanding between SB CAG and the city on the Carrera U.P. Railroad Bridge. I've had the opportunity to not just meet with SB CAG staff, but to talk with some of the city staff. It kind of laid out a very clear approach on how to move it forward through this phase and effort. SB CAG were able to identify some level of funding to provide to the city, so we can move forward with that. And I think as we get clarity of that, then we will need to update the MOU for the next phases. And my recommendation is really on all of these quarter-related projects. It's a great example, and I would encourage MOUs to be done on all of the quarter-related projects. I just think it's provide clarity in particular. So, in summary, let's move forward. And let's move forward recognizing what the goals and objectives are in moving forward is so that we can develop design and construction strategies by generating more information through this initial design to get us to a decision point. We can use that information to explore and pursue opportunities to fund and leverage the funding. As Steve mentioned to you earlier, we still need to go out and find additional funding for the project. We are going to be working on a charter between SB CAG and Caltrans that we hope to bring forth pretty soon to the board for consideration. And continue to work with the local agencies on the parallel projects and work towards, not just doing MOUs, but work to forward, advancing them and making them happen, is what I said. We need to generate and maintain political and community support. To go and leverage and attain funding, everybody needs to sing off the same sheet music. And that's how we will be successful in making sure we can make all of these projects happen. And project readiness. You know, people don't like to fund projects that they can't go to a groundbreaking ceremony pretty soon or a ribbon-cutting ceremony pretty soon. So, keep that in mind. Let's find a way to make those things happen is really a lot of the focus. And with that, I guess I would turn it back over to Steve.
Okay. There are at least five projects that are potentially conditions of approval for the HOV project that have been identified to Caltrans and SB CAG. And I've listed them on the overhead. The top two are bicycle trail projects in the Carpinteria area, leading from Carpinteria into the unincorporated communities outside Carpinteria. C and Cijoe interchange project in the unincorporated area, the Cabrillo Union Pacific Bridge replacement, and then, the Olive Mill Intersection project. Just very quickly on these quarter-related projects. The Rincon, just to give you an idea of what are the scope and scale of these projects that are being considered as conditions of approval-type projects. The Rincon Trail Projects. The related project is Phase Three, Linden-Casitas Project in Carpinteria. And it will eliminate a gap in the coastal trail between Carp Avenue and Rincon Beach. It will build approximately 100-foot bridge over the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. For the Phase Three project, we're impacting wetlands and agriculture, not supposed to do that in the coastal zone. The Coastal Commission staff wants some type of balancing, balancing done for the impacts to those resources. This is what they came up with. This is one of the projects that they wanted to see done to balance some of the impacts in the coastal zone. The immediate stakeholders are the city of Carpinteria, Caltrans, the county of Santa Barbara on this project, but in the background is the Coastal Commission and its staff. City of Carpinteria has agreed to be the lead agency for this project, even though it might be a condition of approval on one of the phases of the HOV project. They've stepped up and said, let's be the lead agency for the environmental phase of the project. They just feel a great sense of ownership of the project, and they want to make sure that it gets done. And they've actually been successful in acquiring some grants that they're using to do the environmental process. So, they've assigned their own staff to take the lead on that right now. This project would cost about $8 million. And to come up with the construction funding for the project, we're seeking grant funds from a state program called the Active Transportation Program. We submitted it, we're going to keep submitting it until this project gets funded. Another project, again, in the Carpinteria area, same thing with the Coastal Commission. This is one of those balancing projects if you're going to impact wetlands and agriculture. They wanted to see the Santa Claus Lane gap closure in the coastal trail eliminated. And they were the same related project, the Phase Three project. And this would connect Carpinteria Avenue and Santa Claus Lane. So, in the city of Carpinteria to Santa Claus Lane in the unincorporated area. We're the lead agency for this one. This is actually a very old project, started in the early 2000s, never really got off the ground. We provided funding for it far ahead of when we started, we conceived of moving forward on HOV project. We just thought it was a good idea to eliminate this gap. The project just never got done. We gave the money to the city of Carpinteria. They weren't able to finish the project, so we've just picked up the funding that was available from almost a decade ago. We're going to see if we can't finish. We're going to, we're going to see if we can't finish, finish this project. And so we're the lead agent for environmental. It is going to cost $5 to $7 million. We don't have that much funding available. We're also going to have to compete for grants for the Santa Claus Lane project. CNUCJO interchange in the unincorporated area near the Miramar. This is related to the Phase Four project. It's very clear that the County of Santa Barbara would like to see some improvements made at this interchange. They're not currently in the scope of work of the Phase Four High Occupancy Vehicle Lane project. However, the county has agreed to, and has hired a consultant to develop options for how to improve the interchange. And it appears that they want some roundabouts on either sides of the, of the interchange to improve local traffic circulation on and off the highway system and, and connecting with the local road system. And that would relieve traffic congestion, improve operations. They developed some options working with their consultant that they presented to the Mountain City Planning Commission in the fall of 2014. Since then, the Miramar's been approved. It may have foreclosed on some of those options. We really need to sit down and meet with the County of Santa Barbara staff and determine if, if some of the options that they came up with have in fact been foreclosed on, what options are still viable. And we need to discuss how to go from this, this roundabout, kind of a design concept level forward into the environmental design and then construction stage. We need to work out who's going to be doing what on, on this project. We're going to talk, when I'm done, about the Cabrillo-Union Pacific Railroad project. The city staff is going to do a more detailed dive than I'm going to do, just so that you give some ops. But I'll give you background and context on this. The Phase One project, the Milpust to Hot Springs project, the scope of it included a multipurpose path along Cabrillo Boulevard between Los, Los Potos and Coast Village Road. Right now underneath the Union Pacific Railroad Bridge there, there are non-standard lanes and shoulders. The idea at the time of the Phase One project, since completed, you know, the Phase One is done, but at the time that we were working on environmental and design of the, of Phase One, the idea was to build a bicycle and pedestrian tunnel underneath the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. It would cost $3 to $5 million. We took the lead in designing that at SB CAG and trying to get Union Pacific's buy-off on, on, on the tunnel. We accumulated about $2.6 million in funding. By us taking the lead, we allowed Caltrans to work on the other features of the Phase One project that I mentioned earlier in the presentation. After about five years and $300,000, we were not able to get Union Pacific to accept a tunnel underneath their tracks. This is what the tunnel would have looked like. From an engineering perspective, this is not a complicated project. It was really just Union Pacific's resistance that prevented, prevented us from being successful on this project. We were accumulating the money, the design is pretty straightforward. There are tunnels jacked under railroad tracks all over the US. They just did not want to allow a tunnel to go under the railroad tracks in this location. They were concerned about the, the bridge abutments adjacent to the, this bridge abutment adjacent to the tunnel. They thought it would be destabilized by boring a tunnel underneath their tracks. They thought the abutments might crack, that's a 100-year-old bridge, and they didn't want to accept the risk. And they would not allow the tunnel to go forward. They were concerned about subsidence of the tracks over the top of the tunnel, so on and et cetera. They vetoed the tunnel. Very frustrating and disappointing. That tunnel would be open and people would be using it today. We were well on the pathway to making that happen. UPRR didn't want a tunnel, but they suggested, why don't you just replace our whole bridge? Well, of course, they'd love somebody to come in and replace their whole bridge for them. Why not? The bridge replacement options that we took, a sneak preview, looking at, were about $10 to $15 million. We had $2.6 million available. So that, that was an issue. So we talked with the city and we agreed to develop an alternative interim project that would match the funds that we had accumulated of about $2.6 million. Now, the city made it clear that they actually wanted the bridge replaced as part of the HOV project, which would be Phase Four is the part that would be going through the city. But work on the Phase Four project was far out into the future. And so rather than wait until that HOV project came along, why not start work on an interim project aside from a tunnel? What else could we do aside from a tunnel? Let's do something with the $2.6 million accumulated. This is what was going to be done. I guess you would call it a raised sidewalk with a railing. And this is something, a concept that actually I believe the city staff came up with to, again, provide a safer travel way underneath the railroad tracks until what they hoped was a complete bridge, bridge replacement as part of the high occupancy vehicle project. This approach was presented to the planning commission, this interim project, moving forward with an interim project rather than the tunnel, which was originally part of the scope of work for Phase One. That was presented to the planning commission. The idea was that, you know, find Caltrans who was in substantial conformance with the permit for that Phase One project. Again, part of their scope was to improve bike and ped access underneath or travel way underneath the railroad bridge, find them in substantial conformance if this interim project went forward instead of the tunnel. Have SB CAG reallocate the funding from the tunnel to this interim project, transfer the lead agency over to the city. The city was willing to do this with the funds that were available. The planning commission actually made a site visit to, to look at how this interim improvement would, would work with the other bike and ped facilities in the, in the vicinity. They sounded supportive of it. We brought this to our South Coast Committee of our board members in 2012 to make this happen, but there were concerns expressed by the committee members and, and there were city staff present that, that the project would just not meet design standards. Shoehorning that raised sidewalk underneath the bridge would leave less than standard with traveled lanes for vehicles. The sidewalks, I don't think, met the, the city's with requirements and, and its various design standards. There just were concerns that, you know, what are we getting for our money? Is this going to be a safe project? Who's going to take the liability if something like this goes forward? The South Coast Committee of our Board of Directors decided just not to vote on the matter. It was just tabled and it, and it just died at that point, stalled out. The city continued to urge Caltrans to replace the bridge as part of the HOV project scope. The HO, the bridge replacement over Cabrillo Boulevard was not included in the HOV project scope, in the draft environmental document. The city raised this concern to the SB CAG Board of Directors. They wanted the environmental document to be modified to incorporate the replacement of the bridge. And the SB CAG Board voted in January 2014 for Caltrans to just go ahead and finalize the EIR as it was with the scope of the project being an HOV project, mostly in the median of, of the 101. And to not delay the EIR to change the scope to include, include the Cabrillo Bridge replacement or the Olive Mill improvements that the city had expressed interest in seeing included in the scope or the CNUCJO interchange improvements. The board just said, this is an HOV project, this is what people voted for, 79% support. We're going forward with the HOV project. However, we will develop those other projects on a separate but parallel track. And that is the way, that is the direction and the decision that they made back in January 14 is to develop those other projects on a separate but parallel tracks, but not delay the HOV project or its environmental, environmental document. So we are in the process of coordinating with those local agencies how to develop those parallel projects. And Mr. Harris mentioned, that's one of his scopes, things in his scope of work is how to coordinate and develop these parallel projects in tandem with the 101 and see if there's opportunities to, again, coordinate them. And, and we also, in addition to finding, finding funding for the HOV project, we also have to figure out a way to fund these separate but parallel projects. And we are working with local agencies. I mentioned Carpinteria is taking the lead on some of the projects in Carpinteria. The county took the lead on, on the CNUCJO project. The city is taking the lead on developing a feasibility study for the Cabrillo-UPRR bridge. So developing projects on a separate but parallel path doesn't mean just SB CAG doing it. Fortunately, there's a partnership with the South Coast agencies and, and we are working with them in coordination to figure out ways to develop them and bring those projects, move those projects forward. Again, we have a very small staff at SB CAG, so we really appreciate the partnership with the local agencies on those separate and parallel projects. So we're at a stage where the city is examining a bridge replacement project. Again, the city staff is going to get into this. We have a memorandum of understanding in place to, to complete a bridge feasibility, bridge replacement feasibility study before we get to the coastal permitting stage. There are the components that need to be in the feasibility study. I'm not going to go through it, the city staff will. We also think that this feasibility study would need to be shared with the South Coast members of our board because they didn't like the interim project. So we want to vet it, make sure that we vet any solutions or replacement projects that might be suggested out of this feasibility study with the South Coast Committee of our Board. In conclusion, we have made great progress on the four phases of our HOV project. There is community consensus to complete the 101 widening and add that HOV lane. It was gained through 101 in motion. Measure A passed with 79% support. All the cities and the county have supported the 101 widening by resolutions, making it the number one regional transportation priority in Santa Barbara County. We have completed Phase One. Phase Two will be done this month. Phase Three is fully funded. If not for a hiccup with FEMA, Phase Three, Phase Three would be under construction right now. Phase Four is the project that we are focusing most of our attention on at this time between Carpinteria and Santa Barbara. We have the environmental document, complete design, as Tony mentioned, which is going to start this summer. We have two-thirds of the funding identified from Measure A and discretionary funding sources that SB has, has available. We are making great progress on the 101 project. This is actually happening. We are also making progress on these corridor-related slash parallel projects that our board directed us to, where local agencies have indicated there are going to be conditions of approval. We're working with all the local agencies. All of those projects are under development in this quarter. Project schedule, you know, we're just trying to move forward expeditiously. A project that's ready to go attracts matching funds. Staying on schedule keeps costs down. Delays increase costs. Delays, a delay of a year on a project of this size, if it, if the escalation cost is 3%, a $425 million project delaying a year, it's like $15 million for a year's delay. That just leaves us less money, as I mentioned earlier, to share with our local agencies for projects that they want to see constructed or for those parallel projects that they'd like to see us build in tandem with the 101 HOV projects. Delays cost money. They affect our ability to deliver other projects and share funding with local agencies. We are hopeful that the environmental document challenges lawsuits will not delay the project. It'll just be millions of dollars potentially in escalation costs for the 101 project. And that's just going to hurt our ability to fund projects in, in the City of Santa Barbara, for example. We welcome the opportunity to do regular presentations to you. Please call us. This was a very long presentation because we haven't been here since 2012, but we'd like to come back more often and maintain a dialogue with you. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay. Mr. Vandenberg, while you're there, could you expound a little bit on something that was in your staff report or project memorandum of February 25th? You talked about the parallel projects and when you talk about the railroad bridge, it's totally silent on a turn lane for southbound 101 on-ramp. And then further on, you say that Caltrans is in fact is now saying that a southbound on-ramp may not be required for the 101 Phase Four project. Could you expand on that a little bit because that turn lane and the impacts from eliminating a southbound on-ramp and the traffic queuing is what was the major concern for this body several years ago when you were here? But now your report's virtually silent about that extra southbound on, on-ramp and the turn lane to accommodate it.
Mr. Chair, before, before Steve answers that, I would just like to save him and explain that. That was, that was called to our attention recently. That sentence is completely, I actually have no idea how that got in there. It's a complete error. We're working with the consultant at HCR to correct that, but there is no intention, Steve can verify right now, that there's no, no intention of eliminating the southbound on-ramp at Cabrillo, that, that'll be a tight diamond with four ramps, including a southbound on-ramp. That is not, not in question.
So then the first part of-
That's an error. Was that an, that was an-
It was actually in the HDR report, the draft.
Okay. That was in the HDR, the consultants' report, I was going to say.
But my first part of my request for you to expound a little bit more on your written report was the, the railroad bridge, your focus in your report seems to be totally on pedestrian and bicycle, whereas the focus from this body was the impact that was caused by eliminating the southbound on-ramp to traffic queuing along Cabrillo Boulevard and Coast Village Road. But you're, you sort of bypassed that. Could you talk a little bit more about what SB CAG's attitude is about this, the need for this railroad under crossing?
Well, this is one of the, this is one of the places where I wish Caltrans were here because they're, they're actually the ones who are handling traffic operations in and around and underneath, underneath the bridge. But, and Fred can, Fred and Fred Luna of our staff can help explain, but I think that their conclusion was, is that the, a turn lane for the southbound on-ramp did, would still, did not need to extend so far that it would require reconstructing the bridge over Cabrillo Boulevard. And so that the bridge could remain in place as is, and there would still be the ability for traffic movements underneath the bridge, making a right-hand turn and going, going southbound. They thought the interchange would function with the bridge as is. I think the, the city, city and city staff have a different point of view, and that was expressed very clearly during the environmental document process, that there was just a difference of opinion over the, the southbound on-ramp, the right-hand turn lane and so on.
Well, I just wouldn't want you at SB CAG to lose sight of what is to us an important part of this. No matter what the eventual design becomes, we want to take care of this problem as well as pedestrian and bicycles. Okay. Commissioner Schwartz had a question for you also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm so appreciative of you raising this because that was going to be one of my key areas of questions. And here's, here's what I'm not able to reconcile given the, the response. I'm looking at the December 2014 project final summary report. Now, this is by our Public Works Department. Project final summary report. Let me make sure that it's, we have so many documents within our package. Yes, it's the project finals. So on page six of that, Caltrans notified the city that the on-ramp to southbound Highway 101 at Cabrillo may not be needed at all.
I think that's what Rob indicated was an error.
I understand. So, so, but I, what I don't see, and perhaps either Mr. Dayton or Mr. Gullett could point this out for me, where in our packet, we have a correction or a clarification on the actual status of that because this is December, this was written in December, and here we are in March, and it doesn't align with the MOU and what was presented to the city council in April of 2013 as to what the expectations were regarding the scope of the work, which as our chair has mentioned, does include a reopening of a southbound ramp at Cabrillo. So I don't know, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to wait to see if we have public comment first and then kind of do a deeper dive on this, but to me, this is a critical item for today's discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Dayton's going to still have his presentation, so maybe he could cover that in more depth when he gives his presentation. Commissioner Loesch, do you have a question for Mr. Vandenberg?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's all about the same thing. I think I heard Mr. Dayton say that, that he didn't know how this sentence even got in here. And then I heard Mr. Vandenberg say that, well, Caltrans thinks there's enough room between the bridge for cars to maneuver and have a right turn lane or a bit of a right turn lane. Seems to me there's not going to be many, very many feet between the bridge and the southbound on-ramp, so.
Mr. Chair, maybe I should finish. Yeah, I, let me try to eliminate the confusion and I will continue on with the presentation, but just to pick up where you're going, if you could just go to that page that Commissioner Schwartz identified, which is, I think it's page six.
Yes, page six.
And it says, it's down toward, I think, three-quarters of the page, the heading, "Caltrans's Latest Plans." That whole paragraph needs to be reworked completely. And again, this was, this is a draft that was done a long time ago. We were, you've got to remember what was happening during this period, which I'll go through the presentation. We were waiting for Union Pacific Railroad- Pacific Railroad to respond. It's never been the intent to eliminate that southbound on-ramp. And then also, I would just say that, as Steve mentioned, and just in support of SB CAG, the SB CAG Board actually made a motion to move forward with the HOV project and then also the Union Pacific Bridge replacement. And so, we're there, and we're here to talk to you about that today. And without further ado, I just want to get into, thank you, Steve. I really appreciate your support there. Let me just talk to you about the Union Pacific Bridge replacement. So, that HDR contract-
Before you get into yours, Commissioner Jordan has one more question for Mr. Vandenberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm just a little taken back about that response and the deflection off to Caltrans. So, saying Caltrans is responsible and is responsible for the interchanges and the adjacent city streets and how they operate, and they're going to do a good job, and there's enough room in that situation, and looking as you go further up the freeway and saying Castillo works well, Las Pizitas works well, any of the other intersections like that works well, Sork sometimes doesn't work well, isn't it within your guys' scope to also have an opinion on that when they say something like that, that there is enough room if the city of Santa Barbara doesn't think there is? Or is it just you pass that off and say Caltrans is the subject matter expert?
Yeah, my comment was, I wish that, since Caltrans has the, Scott Eads would have had the much broader technical background to answer this question better than I could. That's all that I was saying here today.
What you said was, there's just a difference of opinion there.
There is a difference of opinion over whether or not the right-hand turn lane would be needed for the southbound on-ramp between the city of Santa Barbara and the environment-
What's SB CAG stand on?
Well, our board has approved, has voted for Caltrans to finalize the environmental document. So, right now, they stand with the Caltrans interpretation of the project. However, they're clearly hedging, because then they said, off to the side, let's work on a bridge replacement improvement, which would also presumably include a right-hand turn lane. So, that was how they decided to deal with the issue. Let's go ahead with the project. We'll believe Caltrans. We don't need a right-hand turn lane. Or we hear the city. Let's develop the bridge replacement project, and let's discuss this further in the future. If there is even a feasible bridge replacement project that can get through Union Pacific's review, then we'll have another discussion of that in the future. So, I'm reflecting the way that the board handled it, and they kind of cut the baby in half.
Just the messenger, right? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll get on, let Mr. Dayton give his presentation, and then I'm sure we'll be coming back to Mr. Vandenberg and Mr. Harris with some more questions.
Just to let you know that city staff really agrees and supports what Steve, how the way he answered that question. Union Pacific Bridge Replacement Project, we took out a contest after the board decision. We got a contract with HDR. It's actually before, we were working before to get a contract with them. These folks at HDR are really good in particular because they include on their staff people who used to be working for Union Pacific. So, we've had a lot of success, at least crafting something that Union Pacific could approve. The challenge has been, because, is talking to Union Pacific and getting them to respond. We had some high hopes in the beginning. That didn't manifest. We gave them the concept in March of last year, and then received a response back that there's two issues in November, the two issues that they are concerned about, and that's the clearance. They'd like to see an extra foot under the road, between the bridge and the road, and they'd also like to have some track alignment issues. I'll try to explain that to you. We're resubmitting, in the process of resubmitting to Union Pacific, to account for those two issues. The cost estimate in $2,019 for this bridge replacement, as I'm about to present it to you, is estimated at $28.5 million. This is an aerial of the Cabrillo interchange. What you'll notice, what I notice when I see this aerial first is that we've got brand-new sidewalks. We've got actually a brand-new wide beachway on this side. And here's where Steve was talking to us about, yeah, we weren't able to get to here. Not even, you know, it kind of ends all right here. We weren't able to get onto the tracks. This red line is the tracks. When we are done with this interchange in the tight diamond, I just want to put this now, before I cover it up with a bunch of graphics, the width of that street, including the sidewalks and multipurpose path, will end up around 80 to 90 feet, just to get an idea of the breadth. And what happens in the project is the two lanes that are on either side will merge to the middle. So, the construction will happen in the middle of this, and then the ramps will be constructed on the outside. And that's really important for you to try to understand, because right here is going to be the location of that future intersection, the southbound ramps intersection, which is right adjacent to the railroad bridge. So, I'm going to, next picture I'm going to show you is going to be looking right approximately where the red arrow is. It's right there. That's that view into the narrow place. And just to kind of blow it up for you and show you that that width is only 29 feet. So, we've got a long way to go. But changing it to be like the new interchange also is going to mean a much wider breadth. And what HDR has designed is 85 feet. What that looks like is it has a center support, which adds to the width of it. It has a lane coming towards you from this perspective, a five-foot bike lane sidewalk on that side. And then on the other side, has some buffer for that median, and then a through lane, a bike lane, which is located actually to the left of a right turn lane, and then the right turn lane that we were just talking about, the multi-use path on this side. So, it is wide, and our plans now are, when we, according to the memorandum of understanding with SB CAG, is once we hear an official, yes, we have something that you can build from Union Pacific, then what we'll do is we'll come back to the planning commission for a concept review. That's what's outlined in our MOU. So, moving on to the Olive Mill interchange, we did a contract with Kittleson. Incidentally, Kittleson is the same firm that finished the analysis in the EIR, so that was great. The existing LOS at that intersection is E on average. What the consultant found is that in 2022, shortly after the construction of the freeway, which is assumed in this scenario is 2020, the effects, the backup of the intersection will affect 101. I'll show you where that is. The solution they came up with is a roundabout. Actually, a traffic signal didn't even work in that setting. Roundabout was the only solution. And one of the things we're going to need to do, which I'll show you why, is we're going to need to go to the Montecito Planning Commission. This improvement will be in the county jurisdiction as well as the city. So, here is the before picture we're going to use many years in the future of the intersection. And just to give you an idea, this is, you can't really see it in the trees there, but that's the off-ramp, the northbound off-ramp. What the consultant found was that in the future, at the stop sign, if we leave this intersection the way it is, the off-ramp traffic backs onto the main line, and that's not a good situation for safety. And then also, what we already knew, there's a backup on Coast Village Road. Incidentally, when the consultant looked at this intersection, they assumed and accounted for the new southbound on-ramp at Cabrillo. That's a question we get a lot, because once that southbound on-ramp is in place, that changes the circulation. Some trips will avoid this intersection with that new southbound on-ramp, and that was accommodated in this analysis. This is a picture of what that roundabout would look like. Again, this is concept. It's not the design. It fits entirely in the preliminary design and feasibility entirely within the right-of-way, so it has no right-of-way takes. Also, there's a very generous portion of land next to the freeway and North Jamison Lane, Olive Mill and Coast Village Road, and that generous piece of property comes in handy for this design to make it work. What we would do at this point is, is a little bit unclear. Mr. Vandenberg mentioned in his presentation about, you know, leads and who's working. So, this is one of the things we'll be talking about with SB CAG, is what's the next step and how we should move forward from here. And we'll be working with them for that on both of these projects. And with that concludes our presentation. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Before we go to public comments, do we have any questions from the commission for either Mr. Vandenberg or Mr. Harris or Mr. Dayton? Mr. Campanella.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Question for Mr. Dayton. On the conceptual that you showed of the undercrossing currently, and then the scale that you put on there, what the desired uses are, lanes, okay. So, is that the scale? In other words, the 20 feet is, let's say, accurately measured on your scale, which means you're adding about 60 feet or so?
It's not the scale with the picture, but it is an addition of about 56 feet.
Okay. Well, I was looking, there's, I think, a six-foot section, a two-foot section, and a 12-foot section. So, it looked like it lined up to the existing condition a little bit. So, that gives us an idea on how much more width would be required on that.
A lot.
Okay. There's a lot. Maybe for future research, a question would be the, on Hollister and State, there's a crossing there that's in the county, and that was part of a triangle. They call it the triangle or something, which was supposed to be pedestrian-friendly. Is that bridge, is that undercrossing or anything been done to improve that area that we might learn from, either in lane striping or, I don't think they've done any construction yet on that.
Yeah, I'm not familiar with the county's on that project or what the plan is, but they haven't done anything yet.
They haven't done anything yet. It might just be something to keep aware of as we go forward. Okay, pertinent questions here. We cleared that up. On Olive Mill, the reason for the increase over time in backup or queuing, if the southbound lane is in place, are we so close to that problem now versus additional development causing it? Because there's really a limitation on new development there, so I was wondering why the queuing would occur to that extent in the future.
The queuing occurs based on the findings of the consultant because of the new arrivals. And we've talked about this in these chambers before. One of the things that happens in addressing the congestion in the backup that is so great on the 101 headed into Santa Barbara, let's say just in the morning, is that when we make, give the capacity, the arrivals of that traffic happen in a shorter period of time. And that's one of the aspects that contributes to the increase of arrivals at the off-ramp.
Then currently, on the railroad bridge itself, it's a single track on there currently? One track, not two tracks?
It is a single track. That's correct.
Is there right-of-way room for two tracks on there?
There is. The Union Pacific right-of-way is generally 100 feet through our area.
And we don't know if there are any plans in the future, given improving alternate transportation, let's say, coming down from the state, that Union Pacific consider, you know, having two tracks where you can really facilitate commuting, if you will. Is there anything in process on that that's requiring them to look at that or do it?
Commissioner Campanella, yes, absolutely. And the Union Pacific actually is requesting for that. They're requesting that we, the future alignment of the bridge be to the north of the center of the right-of-way, with the concept that the additional track will be to the south of the center of the right-of-way. So, they're actually planning, and everything we're doing and have planned for to date accounts for two tracks in the future.
Okay. Well, in its current state, being built in, I guess, 1917, would it be capable in its current state to handle two trains, weight-wise or construction-wise, seismic-wise? Or would changes have to be made to accommodate two tracks in order to pass muster on a design criteria? Do you know?
Changes would have to be made to accommodate two tracks. Interestingly enough, you might be surprised to find out that those abutments actually have a slot for another bridge. So, if the rail standards for bridge separation between two rails was what it was back when it was constructed, they could just drop a bridge down in there, and you could accommodate two tracks on the existing abutment. But the fact of the matter is, now they have a wider separation between rails, and so it would have to be reconstructed at this point to accommodate two bridges.
So, I guess where I'm going a bit is that this, not only to our benefit by getting a turn lane in, but also to the railroad's benefit, may be for this project to go forward in some way, because it really helps the railroad as well as helping the city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You going to try to get them to pay? Good luck with that. Commissioner Lodge, more questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've had the impression that Caltrans' attitude about the roundabout has been, that's your problem. But with, I guess I recall, 2022, when there would start to be the backup problem, if they leave it this way, isn't it their problem too? And can we expect some more involvement on their part because of that?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Lodge, to answer that very delicately, the intersection is a mess now, and we'd love to improve it. The freeway additional capacity makes it worse faster, and then also contributes the added problem for the freeway. And actually, it becomes a safety problem for the freeway. So, it's not just congestion on our streets, but it'll also be a safety issue for Caltrans liability. So, you know, I think at this point, we're working together, and our hope is that we will find the money to do it. I think that, I think Caltrans, although Scott Eads is not here today, I think Caltrans is listening, and they've reviewed and commented on this report. I think more reports will happen to the SB CAG Board. There'll be opportunities to talk about it. I think just in the past, the communications and the opportunities to communicate haven't been the best, and we're going to put our best foot forward as a team and try to get it done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schwartz, more question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, back on this issue of what I'll describe as the missing right turn lane for a reopened 101 southbound ramp. So, Mr. Vandenberg, if I could ask you to come back up for a moment, because I'm going to press you on a memo that you wrote that's in our package for further clarification. And I heard your response, but in the February 25th memo that is authored by you and Mr. Luna, this issue, number one, is very clearly missing, as a number of commissioners mentioned. So, that coupled with, and then I'll go to Mr. Dayton after this, because in our Public Works December 2014 document, it's also missing, I would like a clear affirmation as to when it will reappear and in which documents it will reappear, so that it's on the record and officially part of the work that we're undertaking. Because to me, there's a big gap between when the MOU was authored by the City Council and with photos provided by Public Works as to what that right-hand lane will look like with a reopened southbound ramp, and where we are today. There's no explanation in any documentation we have today that it will be reintroduced back into the record and into the project. So, I will not let up on this, because I think it's very important to the community and to improve that intersection and traffic congestion on Coast Village. And as you know, we have many photographs from the community about traffic congestion on Coast Village these days. So, what assurances can you give me, and where will it reappear?
Okay, it is currently, the right-hand turn lane is currently not in the HOV project scope of work. We hear the city's interest in seeing the railroad bridge replaced, which would do two things. It would improve bike-ped travel underneath the railroad bridge, and it would potentially provide for the opportunity for this right-hand turn lane that you're discussing. The agreement that exists between the agencies is that the city is going to complete a feasibility study to see if Union Pacific would accept a replacement of the bridge, how much that might cost. And then, our assumption is, is that when the 101 project comes before you for a coastal permit, this is going to be something that may need to be accomplished before you grant a coastal permit.
Well, if I could just stop for a minute- Well, if I could just stop for a minute and clarify, because I may not have sort of pinpointed for you in relation to my question, not part of the mainline project, I know what SB CAGs and Caltrans' position is on the mainline project, but on page nine, in your and Mr. Luna's memo, under "Parallel Local Projects and 101 Corridor," the Cabrillo Pedestrian Improvements, this is how this local ancillary project is being described, Cabrillo Pedestrian Improvements, that already concerns me as to that title, but nowhere even in this local project description, not the mainline 101, the local, on page nine of your memo, is there any reference to a reopened southbound ramp and an additional lane, you know, southbound lane that would then allow for entrance onto a reopened? So, if you tell me SB CAG doesn't plan to reintroduce it, that's one thing, but I'm concerned about why it's now missing from the vernacular in this local project. And then I'll get to, you know, I'll ask Mr. Dayton or Mr. Gullett to kind of the same question in terms of city documents and the tracking of the project that was agreed to, you know, back in 2013.
Right. Well, we're working, again, we're working cooperatively with the city on the feasibility study, and it appears that the city's intention is, in the scope of work of its feasibility study, we see the right-hand turn lane. So, sorry, the city staff have reintroduced the right-hand turn lane. And it's a matter of working out the feasibility of the replacement of the bridge with Union Pacific, determining costs, financial feasibility, community acceptance, environmental impacts, and so, but, yeah, we acknowledge that the city has an interest in a right-hand turn lane. Everybody agrees that the interchange would work better with the right-hand turn lane. But it wasn't essential to be included in the scope of work of the HOV project, and that's why it was left out. It's now being treated as a separate project, and we're going to go through this feasibility study process to see if we can have a meeting of minds for what is feasible, what would Union Pacific step, what's fundable, how can the project be delivered? And there's much discussion still to come, I think, on the...
Okay, I'll come back to them.
If I might interject, is there a chance to get to Commissioner Schwartz's point, that you might reissue a project memorandum that includes updates to correct things like that?
Sure, we could describe, we could describe the project.
So it will at least be a matter of record, like a follow-up to this meeting, and it could be a project memorandum instead of February 25th, it could be March 5th, and a follow-up memorandum that then becomes a matter of record, and that would maybe satisfy Commissioner Schwartz's concern that this is spelled out as a, you know, it's memorialized.
I think we would feel comfortable stating that the city's feasibility study, the scope of work for it, includes a right-hand turn lane.
Yeah.
Okay.
So if any future documents, we'd be happy to include that.
Okay, so I, in a way, thank, thank you, Mr. Vandenberg. So my, a similar question then for either Mr. Dayton or Mr. Gullett, and again, I'm gonna go back to now page six of our city Public Works December 2014 document, that it's not silent on it, but this actually, in a way, concerns me more, refers to the, a reopened, I call it a reopened onramp to southbound 101, may not be needed after all, this is the language in our 2014, and then the elimination of a right-hand turn lane from the project would help reduce the overall cost. So these were red flags for me as to where staff is going with its thought process, its design, its negotiations in, with UP, et cetera, again, vis-à-vis the 2013 MOU that the council agreed to, and what that project included. So how we're, maybe you could then respond to that, Mr. Dayton?
So, Mr. Chair, and planning commissioners, I believe that Commissioner Schwartz is still referring to that page six, the paragraph entitled "Caltrans' Latest Plans."
Right.
If you could take a pen at this time and cross out the entire, just cross out the entire paragraph...
So Public Works has changed its position.
Just redline it, I'm not seeing any pens go up.
Okay.
But just go up and redline it, because this paragraph is completely misleading, false, don't know how it got in there. I could have Pat Kelly come up and explain, he doesn't know, because I talked to him before. We don't know how it got in there. It is somewhat humorous that it's in there, because I, but tragic at the same time, because it's causing you to really, wow, what is this about? And it's just, it's not, you should really cross that paragraph out.
Okay, so it was, it was an oversight that it was in our packet as it is stated here today, is that right?
This is the, this is, this is the HDR report that we received.
I see that, yeah.
And it is still in draft form.
Okay.
Was not corrected, and we were very sorry for the oversight.
Okay, so will it be, just as I asked Mr. Vandenberg, will it be memorialized and documented for the record shortly, that this is not an accurate statement as to city staff's or Public Works' position?
It, yeah.
I see Mr. Kelly nodding, but I'd like to know.
It will be corrected, will be at council on March 17th for the same item, and that paragraph will not be there.
Okay, my last question, thank you, thank you so much. My last question, I, this is still on this same document, the December 2014 document, different topic on page, let's see if there are pages here, page five, this is under project update, and I just want to ask you, there are two bullet points that describe what Union Pacific did not approve when we submitted our initial draft concept. So, and because obviously, as we heard from Mr. Harris, you know, both time is of the essence, the cost factor is driven up with this protracted process. So if, to Mr. Harris's point about getting to a 35% plus design state that allows us to seek funding, could you briefly describe where we are with Union Pacific relative to design and this 35% threshold? That's part one. Part two of my question is, can we now better anticipate what Union Pacific will or will not agree to, so that perhaps we develop two designs, like, we already put forward Plan A, that didn't work, how about a Plan B and Plan C? So if Plan B doesn't work, we go, okay, we knew that was a stretch goal, an ambitious goal with them, but now we have one that we're almost certain they'll approve, and that could be a Design C, I'll call it. Mr. Kelly?
Commissioner Schwartz? Yes, we are making progress, not so much with UP, but with our consultant. Regarding the design, we have already began negotiation with our consultant with the extra services that were provided as part of the MOU and contract with the SB CAG. And that is to look at the alignment that the UP has asked for, and that is to move the existing track 10 feet to the north, such that a future track can be potentially provided 10 feet to the south, or 20 feet off the new track for a future lane, for a future track. So, we hope to get started on that work shortly. It is agonizing to be working with the UP. I've been working with them for many years, but this was even more agonizing than normal. It took them nine months to tell us essentially no, that they could have told us in a meeting.
Right, we see that in our package, disappointing.
So, but we were able to accomplish two things, as Rob had alluded to. One is that we did get a support for, well, support, let me rephrase that, we did get them to allow a allowance for a narrower bridge than building a 100-foot wide bridge, just enough of a bridge to accommodate the future, the shoe fly to reconstruct the new line, and then the future line. And then also to allow a little technicality askew into the design of a railroad as it crosses the road. There's not much of an option there, because otherwise, they'd be building a railroad through the bird refuge, which is not really an option. So that was just pretty much a slam dunk on that. And then the other item that came up was regarding, we now have to redesign the alignment per the suggestion of SB CAG and Caltrans, and ourselves, is that we want to have a design that the railroad says, yes, we don't have an objection. Now, they've made it clear that when they say they don't have an objection, they've made it clear, that doesn't mean we're saying yes. It's, however, generally, they do stick to that. So, we are moving forward with the new design for the alignment as they asked for. One other issue is that they want a larger clearance from 15 and 1/2 feet, that we are suggesting, to 16 and 1/2 feet. That creates a significant amount of grading problems, especially with coordination with the railroad track, and considering there's, no other, very few bridges that are that high, and many of the main line on the 101 are not that high. So, I wouldn't say optimism, but we're gonna look at that and be able to provide, pursue that option again. But we are moving forward with the design. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and then just that second part to my question. So if the next design, let's call it Design B, could possibly not appease them, based on all your experience with them, do we have sort of another, you know, tool in the toolkit, a Design C? Because with each nine-month ticks by, you know, I don't know that we'll ever be able to afford this, even if they do agree. So, time is of the essence, it seems. And so I'm wondering, instead of just one design, kind of iteratively, you know, how about concurrently planning two designs, one we hope they'll approve, but if they don't, after another nine months of submitting it, is there something we have, a greater sense is a more surefire? I know, nothing's surefire with Union Pacific, and I just want to say, I'm very disappointed they're not here today, because they're holding the city hostage. If they're watching, that's my comment. So back to you, Mr. Kelly.
Commissioner Schwartz, there really is no other option, this is it, to move the new alignment...
I see.
10 feet to the north.
I see.
And then that goes...
That's our, like, final offer, in a sense, our best offer, okay. That's what I wanted to understand.
You know, and that also provides an opportunity for an additional track in the corridor, which I believe is also in the interest of what the community has been talking about for some time.
Okay, so the second design that we're working on, this is the break-even plan, I mean, it's either gonna happen, if they approve it, we can move forward, if not, the project is kind of dead on arrival, in a sense, right?
Well, there's really no other option. They have an alignment right now, and we're providing an improved alignment that complies with their interests, and then also the long-range planning of the community.
Right, right, okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Kelly. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kelly, I'd like to follow up on something that you were just explaining to Commissioner Schwartz, that this vertical clearance requirement from the railroad, there's two ways to achieve a higher vertical clearance. One is to grade out underneath, where we know we have drainage issues, and the other is to raise the bridge a foot. What is the railroad's position on that? You would think that over half a mile on either way, a one-foot increase in railroad grade would be imperceptible to the trains. Has that been approached?
Yes, Commissioner, Chair Thompson, is that, we have discussed that with the railroad. Raising the grade of the track is very, very, very expensive, and they've become very reticent regarding that topic. And so, that also has a significant impact further up as far as the Los Patos Bridge, because then the Los Patos Bridge would also have to be replaced, which right now, it can remain in place. So, that's a very expensive option.
More expensive than grading out underneath and putting in a drainage system where we might have water table problems?
Yes, indeed.
Wow, okay.
And also, there's some other options. We can provide shorter spans, which reduce the height of the, rather, the depth of the bridge, increases the length of the bridge a little bit, but we'll be studying that. And we'll, if necessary, we can provide more cost information regarding the track, but generally, they do not want to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan, questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Rob, the report, the Kittleson report that talked about the roundabout, you said that those dire predictions were accomplished with the addition of the southbound on-ramp, right? They were done in context of having a southbound on-ramp at Cabrillo, correct?
You're on Cabrillo.
Correct.
So, the...
Yes?
Yes, the, the southbound on-ramp, when it comes back, has a lot more trips...
Right.
...generated there.
So, spirit of cooperation aside and everything, and the fact that it's not in there already, did they also study what was gonna happen to that intersection without a roundabout, if there was no southbound on-ramp?
I think this is where you're throwing me off. When you say roundabout, I jump over to Olive Mill.
That's what I meant.
Okay, so you're...
So, you have a, you have a study in hand that says, without a roundabout, traffic goes to heck at that intersection...
That we have traffic backing up on the mainline.
With the southbound on-ramp in.
Mm-hmm.
Did they look at without the southbound on-ramp in the project?
No.
Okay.
We didn't consider that for the future, although...
Right now, it is, which right now, it is not in the project, officially.
That's right.
Okay, and so, of course, you're in, you could just make the conclusion, it's gonna be a lot worse, right, in all directions on that intersection, right?
The southbound on-ramp, are you referring back at Cabrillo now?
Yes.
That one is in, is in the works for the future.
No, it's in the works, but what I think I just heard, what is not officially in the project.
It is officially in the project.
Okay, well, I'm confused then. I heard that it will be officially in the project, perhaps after the feasibility, the feasibility study is done by the city. Is that not what I just heard?
Commissioner Jordan, the southbound on-ramp is part of the HOV project.
Okay.
The right-hand turn lane...
Okay.
...extending towards the beach...
All right, got it.
...is only going to be on the inland side of the railroad bridge.
I got that, okay.
And what the city would like is the bridge replaced, and it extended farther along towards the beach.
I get that now, thank you. That was a worthless question, I'm sorry.
Okay, let's open it up for public comments. Cindy Feinberg.
Hello, everyone.
Welcome.
Can you hear me? Okay, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, my name is Cindy Feinberg, I'm the new president of the Montecito Association. And first of all, I just want to thank all of you for your support of this project. I know all of you are very familiar with how important it is to Montecito, and of course, the rest of Santa Barbara. So, we appreciate all the work that's been done thus far. And I'm, secondly, I'm here to tell you, we want to work together. The Montecito community wants to work with the city of Santa Barbara to get this done. And I see the timeframe, if we can get it done sooner, I think that would be great. And I know we've had discussions with Tony Harris, that if we all work together, there is a possibility for this to get done sooner. Now, I also want to let you know that we do support Tony Harris, and we support all of his recommendations. Most importantly, we recommend, and we agree with Tony, his recommendation, that there should be a separate design consultant, engineer for that project of the freeway that Tony identified. As it's going through Montecito, there's several issues that need to be addressed separately. So we urge you to continue, well, we urge you to support that. And then also, we urge you to continue to support the ancillary projects that we're talking about here today, Olive Mill, and of course, the bridge. And we're also going to want to add the San Ysidro interchange, and we'll need to have support for a projects report study that should be done in the future. So, anyways, we want to ask for your support of that. And then we also, in line and in spirit of what I had originally said, we do want to work together, but in order to be able to work, to work together efficiently, we need to be informed. And so we would like to be part of the study group that's working on these projects. I'm not exactly sure of the process that works best, but as you're coming up with these designs for Olive Mill, and for the, and for the Cabrillo Bridge, please let us know when we can work with you, how we can work with you. It's never efficient if you come with us with a design that's a fatal complaint. This is done, this is what we're doing. You know, Montecito doesn't like that. So what happens is, we get a lot of complaints from our committee, from our community members, and then we need to address that, and then we need to go through a whole process, and then that, that further delays the project. So, we, again, we just want to work with you, we want to get this done as soon as possible, and we want to be informed. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak on this subject? Okay, could you come on up and give your name?
My name is, my name is Tom Bolay, I am a former city historic landmarks commissioner. I'm also an architect and structural engineer, working in Montecito. I'm speaking for myself, I've been working with the Montecito Association on many, many of these aspects, but wanted to speak more to the design guidelines and the design of the railroad bridge at Cabrillo. I know there's, the city has a Highway 101 Coastal Parkway Design Guidelines that talks about scale and detail and massing for structures, and it points out that the Cabrillo intersection is exemplary in its use of scale and landscaping, and not looking like more of a Los Angeles kind of approach. And in looking at this bridge design, it really strikes me that it's... And in looking at this bridge design, it really strikes me that it's kind of a Los Angeles approach. It's 93 feet wide, where the actual number of lanes underneath it could probably be done in more like 70 feet or 65 feet, and shorten that span. I have history, when I first got out of school, I worked for structural engineer designing shiplift platforms for the Navy. So we were designing essentially bridges that would lift entire ships 1,000 feet long. And we were designing built-up steel plate girders that had 100-foot spans and 150-foot spans. So I have a fair amount of experience in this kind of heavy lifting of a bridge. And my thought is, one of the things, one of the, as Commissioner Schwartz mentioned, is, you know, a Plan B or Plan C, one thought might be is using a different type of bridge design. If it was a similar bridge design to the railroad bridge at Correo Street or at Castillo Street, that's, those styles called a through girder type bridge, and that does is it reduces the, or increases the distance from the pavement to the bridge. So it might be an alternative where you could have a shorter span, which would be more compatible with the design guidelines, and also not require lowering the pavement, which might save money then. And it's one of those tools that could also potentially give the new designer that Tony Harris is going to bring to this plan, more flexibility in his designing of that intersection. Once the bridge design is kind of locked in, it's going to bind and kind of direct everything in one direction. And so I would hope that in this process, that we could, as Commissioner Schwartz said, come up with a Scheme C that might use a different bridge type that could facilitate a shorter span, less impact, more kind of small-town community character. Because this really is our community's front door. Beach traffic coming down Cabrillo Boulevard, Cabrillo Boulevard, the Bird Refuge, it's such a pristine, kind of pretty view. I'd hate to see this monster railroad bridge be your first impression to Santa Barbara. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see any other public speaker, so we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the commission for comments. Commissioner Lodge?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The comments that Mr. Bolay just made, I wonder if the engineers here, like Mr. Kelly, is that a possibility?
Just to let Mr. Kelly talk, but just one thing, the perspective that, you know, when I was listening to Mr. Bolay, who's definitely had a lot of comments about aesthetics and really good ones, I think one of the challenges to first think about is that the HOV project is summarily changing the, what is recognized in the guidelines is this parkway where the freeway is separated in a wide swash with all this landscape. That is not going to be on the other side of the railroad bridge by any shape, form, or imagination. It's going to be more of a garden style with retaining walls and the ramps right up against the freeway with very limited room for any landscape. So that's, before Pat answered, I just wanted to make sure you had that context, because this is what we're designing the railroad bridge for to receive. Mr. Kelly?
Yes, thank you, Rob. Commissioner Lodge, Mr. Bolay brings up some very good questions and questions that we're asking of ourselves. And what he mentioned is that there are ways to shorten, or rather, to create more space underneath the railroad. And essentially, if you reduce the span, you shorten the depth of the structure. And I believe that's what he was talking about. And so we're looking at ways to, instead of having two long spans, possibly have four shorter spans, is, I believe was what Mr. Bolay was alluding to. And then, you know, as far as the size, scope, and scale, that's a real challenge. I mean, the bulk and scale issues that are typically brought up for HLC, that's going to be a significant challenge for this bridge. However, as Rob had brought up, is that there is going to be a change in the environment due to the new Caltrans interchange. And so we are going to be able, we're going to be required to do, you know, more conceptual work on that. And I think that's one of the things that we learned as far as this report, is that I think we should write it ourselves. And so that's what we're just talking to the consultant this morning about. A lot of too many intermediaries. I apologize for this mistake. We were spinning around pretty quick, and we just assumed that something like this could not happen. Well, Murphy's Law proves itself again, and I apologize for all the confusion. So, yes, these are very good comments. There's a, we know that we are going to have a good row to hoe with the HLC and the rest of the community regarding the aesthetics, not only just the features of getting bikes and peds underneath the railroad and the railroad itself, but also the aesthetics of the community in Santa Barbara and adjacent community.
Okay, well, I noted that it is marked, the report is marked draft, so
Thank you for your generosity.
A little loophole there.
Not in very big letters, though.
Yeah. I had another question, which is, the, there's this, what was it, five years tried to get the tunnel through so that we could have sidewalk on one side of the bridge, or the, it's almost like a tunnel, a 29-foot space. This plan, what you're considering now, has a sidewalk on one side, on the west side, and then this 12-foot multipurpose path. What is the reason for that? I guess what I'm thinking is that the cost and so on, I gather, can be lessened by having a shorter bridge. And is that full 12-foot width needed? Or could you have a more traditional sidewalk on that side?
I'll defer to Mr. Dayton on this.
Commissioner Lodge, the answer is yes, it could be smaller. We're starting out with standard features. You'll also notice that under the bridge is 12-foot lanes, which is the Caltrans standard. So there's, it's a rough work in process, progress. The multipurpose lane, as you recall from the picture, comes down on the easterly side through the Diamond Interchange as it goes up to Coast Village Road. And one of the things to get this, the southbound lanes to work well, that would help, is not having that multipurpose path cross over right at the ramps. It also makes it a challenge for pedestrians to cross in that environment. And so we're beginning with the best, most desired for pedestrians and vehicles, and that is, would bring it down further and then cross at Los Patos, where we do believe that that intersection is going to need some improvement as well. So that was our first brush, but your point is well-taken, is this is the best case what we thought we could get. But then also, we're going to be dealing with this trade-off of this serene environment and preservation, making it all look good. And so we're going to have to wrestle with that together to get to the right answer.
I guess I would say, too, that all these ideas are really great ideas, but the guy that's going to make the decision is not part of the discussion, and that's the railroad. And we could come up with the best ideas in the world, but unless we can come up with some way to leverage the railroad, they're not going to listen to what we want, they're going to tell us what they want. So, Commissioner Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I'd like to say thanks to all of you guys collectively for being back in the room today. It has been a long time. One of the consequences of that time period is that rumor and false information just begins to duplicate itself, and I think this is a step in the right direction. The guy I'd like to hear the most with today, from today, is I've heard, and we've heard the least, and I'd like to get him out of his coat and tie and invite him back for lunch, and that's Mr. Harris. So I'd actually like to make a suggestion to the city that we invite him back for a lunch meeting, maybe even a longer-than-usual lunch meeting, where we can sit and informally just toss our concerns or questions or issues at him, and have him give us back information based on his experience of dealing with all these particular agencies, and even internally with our own staff, as to how that might be. I think that would be valuable. I realize there's some transition there. I'm assuming, when you look at that recommendation for consultancy, that Point C would be one of those people possibly appointed as a consultant? No? Well, then, we'd like to invite you back sooner rather than later. Okay? So, the, and I'm happy to continue to hear from staff that the new buzzword is cooperation. Almost pummeled at me, cooperation, focus on the cooperation. Despite that, I think you're going to probably hear that we have the same concerns going forward with this project that we've had for the past three years. You have a project right now that's only two-thirds funded. One of those thirds is discretionary dollars, not Measure A dollars, and could conceivably, if you're going to take them away from road maintenance, you could also conceivably handle parallel projects with that money, and just make your ask bigger to the state. When you were going through the SB-CAG PowerPoint, every project in every phase had components of the project that were put in there for some type of benefit, whether increasing circulation, adding a bike lane, whatever it was. The ones that are in this project, that you listed in order of priority, the only ones that may degrade are the ones that you're being forced to use as mitigation by the Coastal Commission. The bottom two or three, two of them in the city of Santa Barbara, which costs the most, of course, aren't required by the Coastal Commission, but those are the ones that are falling out. I continue to have concerns that too much focus on just the capacity increase and not focus on the consequences of that capacity increase are just not going to be acceptable to a coastal development permit. It's clear to me that the information's in your hand of the consequences that are going to be at Olive Mill Road. I think the bridge project is a decades-old commitment that is still festering and needs to be resolved. Every time you've, every, from the moment the freeway was put in to every improvement you've made on the freeway, every improvement that Caltrans has made on the freeway, it has adversely affected coastal access and adversely affected pedestrian and bicycle access. And every improvement we make for capacity has continued to erode away both of those, all three of those subjects. So for me, having a method that those are part of the project, or a certainty, are going to be a key component to how I view this project. And what I know where we are today is it's just we're cooperating. So if this comes back in the next two and a half years, which it might not, you might see a whole group of different faces up here, I think that's going to be very important to me. And I kind of popped off earlier on the reference to Caltrans and deferring off to them for their assessment of intersections in regards to, do we need a right-hand turn lane coming under what a eventual bridge replacement project will be, and their assertion that it's not necessary. And before you increase capacity, before the widening, you can walk up and, you can walk through the corridor on 101 in this city and see the damages that the freeway has caused right now that are out of our control. You can't drive under the Correo underpass at 7:30 in the morning without waiting for sometimes up to 10 signal changes. Personal experience, okay? If I'm coming from the Mason, I'm taking a kid to Santa Barbara High School, you just don't go that way. And the reason for that is, the underpass signal goes about three seconds and four cars, and the freeway off-ramp goes about a minute, because Caltrans needs to get those cars off the freeway so they're not backing up. I think it's crazy to say that we're going to look at a project without certainty to solve that problem either at Coast Village Road and Olive Mill and/or under the Cabrillo and the interchange. I just don't see why we would have to continue to live with that. I think the, whatever this project looks like, it should adequately address the consequences that are caused by the project. What's not being talked about today, which of course was part of the EIR that was adopted, is all the other consequences that are going to continue to affect all our other already-impacted interchanges as you move north through the city of Santa Barbara. I think just these two or three projects that are a priority are reasonably part of what should be included in the Caltrans project and the SB-CAG project, and I think we live with the rest of those just because they're there. That's my two cents. Again, I'd like to thank you all for being in the room. I think the more you're in the room, the better comments you'll get, the more credibility you'll build up, the better trust you'll have with, you'll certainly have better trust in the comments you get back. And again, I think part of that, part of the route to that success would be not sitting here like this, but sitting over lunch and getting our coats off, and just actually being able to talk back and forth and a little more candidly and privately. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Campanella?
Thank you, Chair. Another thing that's not in the room, and I don't want to give my fellow commissioners the shivers, but the final EIR report. I mean, I don't think we've seen that, what the final EIR report is, and it might be good to make that available so that if we have questions down the road, we know what's in there and how things are being mitigated, or supposedly mitigated.
It didn't change a whole lot from the draft we reviewed.
It was, okay, I guess if it didn't change that much, it's okay. Or there's some errata or some highlights on things that did change, it might be good to know. But what's not addressed, and I think is going to be addressed in the EIR, is the construction period. What's the impact during construction? What I heard today is, there's no real final agreement on phasing. It's going to be looked at in pieces. How do you get around it? Okay? What's going to be the disruption, both to the local community, as well as people going through 101 as we phase this project? Both to the through trips, worker trips, and weekend visitors, which, both of which our economy and the city of Santa Barbara really rely on. So if I look at what's going to happen, you can't take them to the south side of the railroad or the freeway, you have to go north, and you have to go through Coast Village Road for temporary access as these construction periods are taking place. I'm sure there's going to be some diversion, or a two-lane will go to one, but at the same time, one of the solutions are going to be, especially with a lane not completed, is going to be Coast Village Road. So to get through Coast Village Road, I'm thinking, you're going to have to provide some way to get people through there in a more convenient way than currently is on the four- or five-way stop. Just as you're providing a turnaround for, a roundabout for through traffic in Carpenteria, I think the roundabout at Olive Mill is probably the most important project to get done now, and preceding the other work, because it's going to have the, try to alleviate to some degree the greatest impact. So I would concentrate on that one for funding, and I go to Caltrans, as my fellow Commissioner Lodge stated, that this is really part of the project, okay? As far as funding, some way you're going to have to have temporary access for traffic to get it out of the area on weekends and during the week. So for the extra money that would cost on something that does not have issues on easements or setbacks or right-of-way or anything else, it can be done, there's no real hangup. And it's a joint between Montecito Association and the county and the city. It looks like people want to cooperate to get this done. So there's a need now, let's do it on a permanent basis and not on a temporary basis, and then have to come back and revisit it in the future, suggestion. Secondly, I think somewhere in this, on a temporary basis, or maybe temporary going permanent, I think Union Pacific has to be part of the solution that we all want, which is getting people here in a way other than the auto. Okay? And I know they have their schedules for individuals versus freight and things like that. But during this construction period, which is good, if you combine both the bridge and the freeway, let's say, happening at some time staggered, we have to get people up here. And I think the railroad, as part of this process, maybe should be approached as flexible as they can be to schedule their route times so we can get more people up here more conveniently, and also out of here. As a tourist, rather than spending three hours in traffic, I'll take a train if I know it's going to get here in some reasonable amount of time. And if we want people to start commuting to work here, we have to make it attractive for them as well, so that the arrival times coincide with what the work times are. So I would maybe put that on the list as well. Thirdly- Thirdly, I think we should keep track of what's going on at the state level or federal level regarding these bridges and double, and rails going both ways, as part of our regional transportation plan, as part of our sustainable community strategies, as far as cap-and-trade funds being used to improve transportation. And stay tuned at that, I would say, and you may be doing that, but stay tuned to dovetail it with what either the railroad has to do eventually, or the way they have to do it. If we're coming up with a design that sort of fits our need, we also maybe have to make sure of that the funding that's available may also have requirements on what they want to see. So if there's a potential to get money from the state, what are those, if that's coming, what are those requirements going to be for improvements of overpasses and the bridge? So that would be my suggestion. And number one is to move forward on Olive Mill, which I think everybody agrees with, but also approach Caltrans as being part of the solution, because they could be causing the problem, especially during the construction period. That's my comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I want to start with where Commissioner Campanella left off, this lane and train longtime proposition and need in our community. Personally, I have renewed optimism that maybe there's a chance now for some breakthroughs with our state Senator Hannah Beth Jackson chairing the Senate Select Committee on Rail. I don't know if our staff, I would just ask, as, kind of as a comment, or propose, that if our staff is not already working closely with Senator Jackson's office and her staff on that, to see, and I'm sure SB-CAG is in tune, you know, what more can we do? How can, to this point, the design of what we propose fit in strategically with where that Senate Subcommittee is going in its separate negotiations, as I understand it, with Union Pacific? So just making sure that's on our radar, and we're highly engaged in that regard. So, speaking of engagement, I want to pick up on a request from Ms. Feinberg, who's Montecito Association President right now, and in working together, and I couldn't agree with you more. Part of my concern and some disappointment has been that there hasn't been more cross-community engagement. And currently, this year, Commissioner Thompson and I are the planning commission liaisons to our city 101 Subcommittee on Design. Now, that has, I'll use the term languished, it's languished a bit, it's kind of gone dormant. And so my request, as of today going forward, is that staff begin to more proactively communicate with Commissioner Thompson and myself to engage us and other constituencies, including Montecito at the appropriate junctures, because I think, as you mentioned, Ms. Feinberg, you know, the more we get out front of this and proactively discuss, negotiate, come to a meeting of the minds, I think that will make for a more efficient and effective, hopefully more cost-effective process as well, that could perhaps expedite this. And I want to comment on the roundabout. I'm so pleased that even if traffic signaling were not, has been found to be not feasible from an engineering perspective, I think not only the data, the traffic circulation data, the traffic studies data supports it, but I was going back to a letter that we received in 2010 on the Montecito Community Plan. And this was from, I just want to reference this because this is, it's important, then-President Peter Van Dwinneken, I think he was in the room earlier today. "Montecito Community Plan Policy Circulation M-3.4 Traffic Signals Are Not Considered Compatible With the Semi-Rural Character of Montecito." And yes, Coast Village Road is technically in the city, but we all know, it's a key artery to Montecito, and certainly going northbound, coming from the south, it's an important gateway into the Montecito community. So I'm highly supportive of the roundabout design. I know the details are, are to be determined there. Mr. Harris, I'm so pleased and relieved that you are on board, because I think you're helping to kind of wrestle, wrestle to the ground such a large, complex project, as was mentioned, probably one of the most complex, if not these most complex, transportation project with ancillary projects associated in, in modern times for Santa Barbara, certainly in my lifetime. So I think you're really going to help us strategically and tactically move all the pieces forward. So I just want to acknowledge that, and as Commissioner Jordan has invited you, I want to take that even a step further. I would like to ask, ask staff formally to secure one or more dates where you can come to the planning commission, whether formally or informally, on a more periodic basis, to be in discussion with us, to apprise us. You know, working, obviously, collaboratively with staff, we don't want to get ahead of where staff, staff needs to go. Now, I want to mention on page five of our staff report, in terms of the section on the Olive Mill Roundabout, speaking of collaboration, I just wanted to find out from staff on, on the statement that staff anticipates holding a joint city planning commission, Montecito Planning Commission concept review hearing. If there's any, if there are any other details on that at this time, just with the, the members of the public here and from the Montecito community, if we have any closer sense of the timeline around that.
We do not, but we're working with the county staff to establish that.
Okay. Couple of more of additional comments. So to close, to go back to a comment, which is the other side of the coin of my question regarding this February 25th memo from Mr. Vandenberg and Mr. Luna, here's what I would ask of you. This goes back to the famous page nine that I've now referenced. This parallel local project is entitled, in your document, "Cabrio Pedestrian Improvements." There certainly are more dimensions to this project than pedestrian improvements. So number one, I'm formally asking you to retitle this in all of your documents going forward in a way that is more accurate in terms of our local project, and please consult with staff, I'm going to look to Mr. Dayton and Mr. Gullett, to ensure that your, your written communications are in alignment with the cities, and all of this wraps around the MOU, so that we're all in sync as to what the project entails, and we're all moving in the same direction. And I, you know, I don't want to point fingers to Caltrans, number one, I think that's kind of a sloppy way out, and Caltrans isn't here today, so they can't defend themselves in terms of who got the information from whom. I think, you know, SB-CAG knows kind of its, its marching orders in terms of how to improve upon this and correct the record going forward. So on the other side, I would ask staff regarding this draft, I know it says draft, Mr. Dayton, but this December 2014 report also says project final summary. So when this is reissued, whatever the next iteration is or version is of this, I'm going to be looking really carefully on every page for all the language that references this project and that reopened southbound on-ramp. So in conclusion, that, I know some of my comments were very pointed, they may have sounded somewhat harsh, but let me say on the positive side, I greatly appreciate all the work. We have a lot of moving pieces, it's very difficult, I know this has taken a significant staff resource, continues to, so I really do appreciate it, even where we may have some differences, or I'm asking for certain kind of direction. Greatly appreciate the Montecito community coming out. I do hope that we can be more engaged with one another. I think that, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Thompson, as Chair, but I think you can assume that we will engage with you some, somehow. Certainly, the two of us, as liaisons from this commission, will make it happen. And again, appreciate the opportunity today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Well, I just would briefly say that I think you got a lot of feedback what the commission is thinking today. And I would say that going forward, when this comes back for any formal review and a coastal permit, we're going to be thinking back to the Phase 1, when we heard that we were going to take care of these problems underneath the railroad bridge in conjunction with, you know, it was kind of like one of those, "Trust us, we'll get it done," and the railroad put a kibosh on it. Well, we're in the same situation here. It's not part of the project, and we're in the "trust us" mode unless it's actually funded and going forward. And I think that it's gotten to be, the situation with that railroad undercrossing has gotten to be a lot worse with the Phase 1 elimination of the southbound on-ramp. I could see why they wanted to eliminate that due to safety with high-speed lane on-ramp, but it certainly exacerbated the problems on Cabrillo Boulevard and Coast Village Roads, only made the situation worse. So the "trust us" is going to be looked at even more skeptically on the next go-around. So that's just a word of advice, I won't say a warning or anything. Does the staff, Mr. Vandenberg, Mr. Harris, Mr. Kelly, Mr. Dayton, anybody have any further comments for the commission before we wrap it? Well, thank you all for being here today, so we'll complete that item. Thank you. Next item is our administrative agenda, staff hearing officer liaison report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just three short items yesterday, 21 minutes. The staff reports were longer than the deliberations, a couple interior side setback modifications, very minor, and then a hillside location that's not building yet, but was moving a lot line to begin accumulating more acreage so they could meet the 45,000-square-foot minimum acreage in their, in their hillside district for future development. So nothing much to report.
Okay. Any other committee or liaison reports? Commissioner Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the Historic Landmarks Commission meeting last week, there was considerable discussion of some changes to the guidelines, largely relating to things that didn't used to be, such as electric charging stations for, for electric cars, and backflow plumbing benches, utility boxes. So they, that was one of their items of discussion. The art museum project, which was before us, received final approval, but with a return to the consent calendar for some of the details that the commission was concerned about. And there is a, a project that will be coming to us for one of our favorite things, the CUP at 340 West Cabrillo, which they are going over now, which, an as-built conversion of a gas station to a mini-mart. And that has taken quite a bit of discussion. And they also, as you may have seen, approved a sculpture in front of the police station, that is of a police officer leaning over to help a little girl. So, by Bud, by Bud Bottoms, I gather.
Thank you. Commissioner Higgins.
Parks and Rec Commission hearing last week, the part of the hearing that I did see on TV had to do with more facilities and parks for off-leash dog uses, McKenzie Park, some of the beach areas, and it was fairly well written up in the local press.
Okay, thank you. Any others? And Renee, any final words for your last meeting with the planning commission?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for giving me an opportunity to say one more thing. I do want to thank you all for being very supportive and a great body to work with. And as you mentioned, I will be back, of course. Lots of other reasons and projects why you will see me, and I want to thank also Julie Rodriguez and Scott Vincent for everything they do to help support this position, and whoever will end up replacing me will have their great support. And so I just want to say thank you. It's been very enjoyable, and I'm going to miss it.
No, thank you. And with that, the meeting is adjourned until next Thursday here at 1 o'clock.